Sons have to attend here and I need to feel comfortable and right now I do not.
Tonight, concerns from Newcastle community members and parents in the school district. After this picture surfaced over the weekend showing a group including Stacy Fleeo, Newcastle School Board President making a gesture, some say symbols, white power. After a school board meeting, Fleeo told Pittsburgh's Action News 4 it was a completely innocent mistake.
I went into a neighbor's house. They had a cardboard copy of Donald Trump. We took a picture making fun.
Even if you did not know, and I told her this, even if you did not know what it was.
You think she didn't know? Do you think she didn't know?
Um, personally, um.
First entry of an alcoholic beverage in the.
Hey, mine's, mine's gone.
It's Saturday, it's Saturday in Vegas.
Saturday, got you, got you.
I think we're going out, we're going out to uh do a little shopping for the dog, not for us, we got a new dog.
I heard about that, Kobe Bean, right?
Kobe Bean, yeah, adopted little puppy.
Gotta represent Kobe.
Gonna go shop for him, but um yeah, that's about it. We have this week coming on Dev Booker. Dev Booker, she's super cool. There was a whole um kind of shenanigan, uh shenanigan going on in her hometown in Newcastle. I know we have some viewers and some people local in that area who are um. Uh Nick, your mom.
Yeah, my mom, stepdad, my sister live there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they're not really involved, they kind of stay low key, but.
Yeah, yeah, keep it low key. But yeah, so the president of the school board or whatever was photographed, um you know, throwing up the white power symbol in like a, it, they had like a Trump party, that's what they called it. It was like, it was a make, make America great again party.
And then like, like we said earlier, uh that's, you know, when, when you're in that arena, when you're in that context, the first thing is someone's doing something probably either racist or someone's probably, I mean, because that's just been the, like, you know, we talked about, that's the rhetoric that he's put out there. I mean, I know we're not getting into politics because like I don't really know too much, but like just from being on the outside, like that's been the rhetoric that he's put out. He hasn't denounced racism, in my opinion.
Yeah.
He, he doesn't, that's what he doesn't do.
He encourages it.
I know, he might, yeah, exactly, exactly.
And that's my whole thing, like, okay, if you, if you support Trump, okay, that's cool, but in your, but hit the fact that he's racist wasn't, it wasn't, you know, like, uh, it didn't matter, you know what I mean? You kind of overlook.
Exactly.
So that's what, that's what, that's what I get out of that.
Uh, one hundred percent. And, and I, I know a lot of people who, who vote for him and stand by him and I'm sure, hey, I'm sure he probably has done some good like policy things. I don't know enough about what he's done behind, you know, I'm, you know what I mean? But if, if the rhetoric that he puts out, if the racist context that he puts out isn't at your top of your list, then you're accepting it. That's, that's important to you, you're accepting it. And in my opinion, like you just said, if you're accepting it, then you're part of the, you're a part of that problem.
Exactly, why not? And that's what we're preaching, that's what we're preaching the whole time with the whole podcast, not being blind to.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
What's going on in the world. I'm just cussing on the podcast now, I guess the, the doors are open.
Flood gates are open now.
Yeah, the flood gates are open, we have wine. We have a full show.
No, we're good, bro, we're good.
We have a full show.
Well, no, it's, that should be good, man. I mean, uh, yeah, it's crazy.
I mean, I saw the. She was cool, that was real cool, they're gonna like it.
Yeah, she was real cool, she was real cool. Um, good conversation. I mean, I saw the, I think we could probably put a link to the, the news story. It was on WTAE in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
I mean, they covered the whole thing, interview, she was Facebook Live for some of the stuff. Um, interesting.
Yeah.
And it's also a glimpse into, to me, what happens in those small town racially divided school districts, where you have, like, I think we talked to her and asked her about the racial divide of Newcastle School District. And she said it's prod- not predominantly black, but pretty much black. And from, from the school board, it seemed like a lot of them are white on the school board. It's just funny to me, not funny, but it's just how that works out, you know what I mean? Like, does not up, does not up.
So uh we'll, we'll show the conversation with her and uh we'll hope you guys enjoy, for sure.
Yeah, enjoy.
I'm mad because I didn't um unpack any of my wine, so have a water.
That works, that works, that works.
That works too.
It was a short notice, I kind of just told you like ten minutes ago.
It's okay, I understand.
Very short notice. So uh thank you for joining. We um, uh for the people who don't know who you are, I kind of wanted to get to know you a little bit, let them kind of see what uh you're about, and then we'll kind of get into the details of it a little bit later. So you go to Akron, is it, is it your second year coming up or?
No, I'm actually a senior.
Okay, okay, that's what's up.
All right, congrats.
Thank you. I am majoring in communications, media studies, and I'm minoring in sports management. But after like everything happened, I kind of want to minor in political science, but we'll see. Because I, I mean, I have a year and a half, so it's like I can easily um get those credits in.
For sure. How do, how do you like it at Akron? I, I kind of wanted to go there like back when I was in high school, but they were too good for me. I ran track and.
Way too good.
I couldn't run there, no.
Well, um I will say, um the track team is phenomenal here. They're probably one of the best teams here. Um, the football team sucks, absolutely sucks. They didn't win one game last year. But um the school itself, it's, it's pretty good. It took me a long time to actually start to like it here. Um, that's because it definitely, it was a little bit different. Um, you know, it was challenging, I had some hardships, but I'm a tough girl, so I got through it, but um.
That's what's up.
Love it here and I not see myself anywhere else.
We're happy to hear that. Now, you're um from the Newcastle area, like originally?
Yes, born and raised in Newcastle, Pennsylvania. I still have a house out there, so I'm always there, always.
I can see the passion and the energy just with everything that you're trying to do. I can tell that you're, that's where you're from, for real.
That, exactly. Well, I um, a lot of people who aren't from Newcastle, they always are saying like, you know, Newcastle's this and that, bad place and all that. I'm like, well, if you actually like live there, then you know, you, you see pride in, in the city, even though like obviously, you know, crime happens everywhere and things happen everywhere. But the city itself, it's small and I actually consider it like a family, so. You gotta, gotta be passionate about that.
Yeah, we can kind of relate, Nick. We're, Nick and I, we're from Greensburg, it's not too far from Newcastle.
Yeah, my uh, no, I was just gonna say, my uh, my mom and stepdad and my sister moved there. Um, they live there, they still live there now, but they, they lived there when I, or moved there when I graduated high school. So it was, I've been, I've been there a lot, I've been there a lot. Um, that's what I actually wanted to ask you about. I kind of want to ask you, kind of, what is the racial divide that you've seen in there? Because like as a white person coming in there, I see it so much because like my parents live on, you know, my mom lives on one side of town. And you know, it, it seems, it seems very divided just from, from being an outsider looking in.
It is very divided. Um, so originally, I grew up on the West Side, um that's where I'm from. Um, I lived there all my life. And recently, about seven years ago, I moved to North Hill. And um it was very different because on North Hill, um you won't really see a lot of African Americans there. You're not gonna really see any like Hispanic, Latinos, like stuff like that. Um, you're gonna see more of those people um in like Croton, like I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, um what is it called? It's um, uh Crestview. Crestview is one of.
Yeah.
The many.
Okay.
You know, um section eight housing that we have. Um, that's one thing too about Newcastle. We have, I believe they said eleven section eight houses. In one small city?
That's a lot.
But I, I think that's what it was. Um, so even just that, like that's where everyone is grouped up in these um section eight housings and communities. And then um where I'm from on the West Side, we have a lot of African Americans there, like a lot of them. Um, South Side as well, um South Side as well, you know what I mean? Um, but it's a very strong divide. I'm not sure if you like seen even on like the Newcastle breaking news pages and stuff. And the way people react to things, like that tells you a lot.
I've been seeing it lately, just being interested in what's going on. And that's kind of the main reason why we wanted to bring you on. Um, the way we're gonna promote this, we're gonna, we're gonna chop up some clips of like a live, all that stuff, so I'll edit all this out. But like, what I, what I was saying, the main reason we wanted to bring you on was to kind of tell your side of the story of what had happened. So I kind of, I don't even want to get into, I want you to kind of tell what it is. I know you're ready for it, I know this.
I'm so ready for it.
This is what you're about. So kind of just a brief description for someone who has no idea, it's the, the school district president, am I right?
Yes, school board president.
Was photographed, and I'm gonna let you take it from there, like it's.
Okay, um so basically, one day, um it was um about three weeks ago. Basically, I was on Facebook, because I'm into the news and stuff now, and you get Facebook, or you get news on Facebook. Um, and I saw a picture that WTAE had, um they wrote an art, an article about. And um Saronis, he is the councilman for Slippery Rock, he posted the picture on Twitter originally. And he got backlash from it on Twitter, and so he decided to delete it. But you know, my mom always taught me, whatever you put on social media, you know.
For sure.
So I'm certain of, you know, what you post. Somebody screenshotted it and they sent it to WTAE and they made an article. The article got shared on Facebook. And one of my friends from high school, we graduated together, she was like, look, like look deeper into the picture. And so I'm like, wait a minute, that's Stacy Fleeo. She's the school board president for Newcastle. And I saw everyone, you know, putting okay sign up, and I'm like, okay, wait a minute, this is, that's not okay. Um, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the white power symbol, but it's been around since um 2017, around the time that Trump uh got into office or he came in 2016, but.
It was right after the Charlottesville, uh in Charlottesville in Virginia, right? That's right, yeah.
Um, with that, um I forget her name, but she passed away. Um, they ran over it, but like.
I was familiar with it a little bit, but then I went to your page and I saw you went on live like not too long ago, had like two thousand views or whatever, like.
Yeah, yeah, I just watched that, I too.
I learned a little bit.
I have to go live because all these people kept saying, oh, you're a bad person and you're just trying to start trouble and um you're, you're trying to make everything about race. And I'm like, it's out there, like if you do your research, you can actually see it. And you can see um that groups like um Patriotic Prayer and uh Proud Boys, they do it too, and that's how they identify themselves. So for a whole bunch of people to like, one, they were blowing my phone up, oh my. I was. My number.
That's crazy. Adults too.
Adults, yeah.
Like.
One of the people that was in the picture, um she is Diane Paper, she is Attorney Paper's wife, and they were in the picture, it was at their house. She reached out to my mom and.
Yeah, yeah, I saw this part.
Uh, yeah, I saw, I saw you talk about that too.
Yep, she reached out to my mom and she basically was trying to tell me how, well, talk about my parenting, saying, oh, if that was my daughter, I would tell my daughter, you know, to believe that or something. And my mom told her, like, me and Devin are two different people. Um, but I stand behind her and you know, like, I'm with her on this. And so she was like, you want to talk to my daughter? Because I'm like, whoa, she's not about to call my mom. Okay, let, let me talk to her. Uh, so we got on the phone and of course it went left from the moment I got on the phone with her. And I talked just like this because you know, um I'm big on, I don't want them to ever try to say, oh, she's that angry black woman. Like I don't, I don't like stereotypes, I don't want them to do that to me. Um, and it just goes to show, like, if I'm coming at you, I'm coming at you comfortable and I can talk to you like this, we can get somewhere. But if we're both yelling at the top of our lungs, we're not gonna get anywhere.
Not really gonna get it.
I'm okay with mine. I like to hear other, um everyone's thoughts and stuff, so um I, I wanted to listen. She would not let me talk. She talked over me the whole entire time. And also, she made it a point to tell me that white people get killed more than black people um in the hands of police. And then she said, what if I told you Black Lives Matter offends me? And I'm like, what does this have to do with what's going on right now?
That's ridiculous.
That's underlying, that shows that, that underlying racism coming out.
Exactly, exactly. And so when she asked me, she was like, well, what do you think we should do about this? I said, well, you need to apologize because you hurt a community of people, not just one, several communities. And she's like, well, we're not gonna do that. So I'm like, oh, so you're speaking for everybody? Okay, let me go put this on Facebook. So I, that kind of how it started everything, and then we made a petition for it and we got over eight hundred um signatures because everyone wanted Stacy to be removed.
It was, it was a petition to get her, to get her fired?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So I recently had a meeting with her um last Monday. Um, we were supposed to have a meeting the following week, but she didn't show up, so.
Wow.
Last Monday was when we had the meeting and um the superintendent, Mr. Blasio, she was like, we, I feel like we're backtracking, like I thought we were over this. And I said, no, um Stacy wasn't present at the first meeting. So all this energy that we have right now is built up. It needed to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it was gonna happen.
It was gonna happen, it was gonna happen. Um, and I told Stacy personally, I told her like, listen, I'm not a bad person, I don't think that you're a bad person either. However, um you still did something and you have to hold yourself accountable for it, you have to be responsible for it. Because I'm not sure if you guys knew about this either, but Mark Kirkwood, he was um one of the first instances, um about five years ago, he said the N-word. He passed away now, but um he said the N-word at like the roast party, and he thought that was okay. And um he was on the school board as well, but they didn't kick him off the school board. He ended up getting reelected and got twice as many votes the second time.
That's crazy.
Exactly.
That's crazy.
Said, that's the reason why we need to push for her resignation or something because we can't have instances like this keep happening and nothing.
And not do anything about it, exactly.
Exactly, exactly.
What do you see happening like going forward? I know um, I saw on your live, I thought this was like the coolest part. Like you were going live as she, she was coming out of a, a meeting or, and like you approached her, you gave someone your phone, you walked right up on her. You walked right up on her and you, you asked her um, like for an apology or to explain something better to you. Tell me about that part, I'm gonna.
Um, so when I walked up to her, because um I, I wanted to prepare myself, so I looked at the mission statement and the vision statement on the NCISD um website.
You came ready.
So I was like, you guys talk about research-based practicing, but how come your um, your president couldn't do that? Um, she said that they were just mocking him, mocking Trump, it wasn't it.
Yeah.
It's like, well, if a kid at school was to throw the middle finger up just mocking someone, you guys would reprimand them. Just like um my best friend, she was crowned the 2017 Homecoming uh Queen. She put her middle finger up at um Homecoming and they gave her Saturday the tension after, and a whole bunch of people were like, oh my God, take her crown away and, and all of this. And um so I'm like, well, there has to be a policy if we violate this, and they let me know that, I guess the school board doesn't have a policy like that. So um at the meeting, we talked about making a policy. Um, we also talked about that they need to apologize. Now, the first meeting, we told Mr. Blasio that she needs to apologize, however, the second meeting, I said, where was the apology? We didn't say anything. And she said, oh yeah, I like, I, I'm gonna make an apology on August 10th. And I said, no, you're gonna make an apology tomorrow because it's two weeks now. And um at this point, it's like you're sweeping around the rug, like it's nothing.
Yeah.
And um so we got her to make the apology, however, I told Stacy, she also needs to make an apology. I have not seen nothing yet.
Yeah. It's just, why does it have to be such like a tug of war battle for someone to apologize when they're in the wrong?
Exactly. She said, I guess she had to um get permission from the school board to do this. But it's like, you're the superintendent. You didn't get permission from the school board to, you know, talk about um our graduation about George Floyd and, and all that. You can do what she want at this point. You had to say something. And your silence is still saying something. That's what people don't understand. Being silent is still saying something.
That's the worst part, that's the worst part. People don't understand that still.
They don't.
It.
People I used to call friends.
It's ridiculous. Now, is the, Dev, is the racial makeup at Newcastle, is it predominantly black? I mean, I, I just from, from what I've seen, red and things like that, it seems like it, but I, I don't know personally.
Um, I don't want to say predominantly, um but there is a lot, like, um.
The law.
Okay, now real quick, we have, we have the actual, like, only actual school in.
Yeah.
Um, if you were to go to the townships like Union, there's maybe like one, two or three black kids that go there. Um, Miss Shannick doesn't really have any. Um, Wilmington, Shenango, you'll be lucky if you see one or two. Laurel doesn't have any. Newcastle is basically where they all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and like, that's crazy that, so the, the, this lady, the president, right? So uh she still has not, I, I was watching the Facebook Live that you put out that, you know, she kind of put out like a, a statement that was kind of like a half-assed, like.
It was weak, yeah.
Yeah, like a weak statement, like.
I talked to her about that and I told her like, um if you made a statement, because at the time, um I'm not sure if you read the paper, but I don't get the paper. I, everything's online to me.
Yeah, sure.
Um, they put my address out in the paper.
I saw that too, that's ridiculous.
And so Karen, who had an apology, that was in that same article. And that's why I told her, she needs to make an actual apology because everything else is overshadowed by my address. So, exactly, so I guess.
Why was your address put out?
They're gonna take out the address part, Mr. Blasio said. She said that um I changed her, so they're gonna make sure, and like, when you talk at these school board meetings, that no address has been involved. I don't know.
Yeah.
I would be curious to see if, if you went back and asked, or, I mean, I don't know if, if anyone could do this, but like, anyone else who spoke up about an issue at school board meetings, did they put their address in? Like, I'm.
Yeah, that's, I, I don't understand why they had to put my address out.
Yeah.
One thing about um Newcastle news, they like to focus on the negative and not necessarily the positive, if that makes sense. So I'm not sure if they put it out because they wanted to um scare me, but they wanted to intimidate. But they clearly have not met my mother. I'm raised by a single mom, so. Intimidated. And she also, um, she was a Marine, so you can only imagine.
She's, she's extra tough then.
Yeah, you're a paper whatever.
Exactly.
Um, I think I, I tried to get at this earlier, but like, do you think, um, do you think she's still gonna be the president going forward or is there a chance? Anything that we could do, any more petitions, resign, or what's going on?
We talked about that. Um, she made it very clear that she's not gonna resign. Um, she said basically, if she resigns, that says that she's guilty. And I told her, I mean, you can't are.
Yeah.
You know, okay. Um, one of the school board uh members, they actually told her, if she didn't, if she resigns for about like three months or something, um that would be okay. Um, she still, she says she's not resigning. Um, she feels like she would be more, um like it would help her more if she stayed on. I don't know, I feel like a lot of people, they hold these titles there to heart, because she says she doesn't get paid for this. So it's like, you know, maybe nobody would know who she was unless she had that title, you know, onto her name.
But what's she doing to like help the situation? You know what I mean? Like at some point, like you said, she has to take, you know, own accountability. And if she wants to stay on to be president, then there has to be some sort of effort to heal the wound and move forward. It doesn't seem like she's really doing much of any of that.
So um at the meeting, they brought up the fact that they're gonna start doing diversity and inclusive trainings. Um, they're gonna get on to that, hopefully.
That's something.
Um, in the next couple of months, that, that's what they're gonna do. Um, however, like I said before, because they didn't necessarily put in um a statement out when it should have been out, trust in all the community, it's gone.
Oh, definitely, I should, as it should be.
Time's just going, and she's just waiting, it's not the right time for her apology?
Like, that makes me so mad, because like there doesn't need to be trainings. It's not that hard to talk to people. It's not that hard to make an effort, it's not that hard to listen to people, it's not that hard to, to, you know, engage in a dialogue. I, I like, I hate, I hate, like, when, like even when we were talking about our school, they're talking about putting in a curriculum and everything. And I'm like, A, that, that's great, that's a great step, but like, it's like there's no effort to, to really learn and educate and do all those things. Like it just seems, it's like lip service, basically. It's like that political lip service that is just, I think everyone is just so tired of.
Exactly.
I know I am. I know um if the roles were switched, I feel like I would be out of the job. Um, but I think that's the problem. It's, you know, necessarily, no one's saying that she's a bad person, no one's saying that she didn't, that she did know. Um, because she kept telling me she didn't know what it meant, and then she also kept saying that she kept asking people and they didn't know what it meant. I'm like, well, that's why education is important, because you can research these things, you can see, you can um educate yourself on the topic. And I guess some of her friends would send her pictures of me doing the West Side symbol, because that's where I'm from. And I kind of, holds no weight, like it's, it's not.
And, and, and too, like, that's the problem with having Donald Trump as our president and posing in a picture with that. Like I heard in, in your Facebook about giving context. That's all the context you need right there. When you're posting with him, because what, the rhetoric that he puts out, the things that he says, that's exactly what you're saying. You're signing, you're signing your name to that. Exactly.
And I already, I keep saying this in every, every interview I do, I don't care what anyone's political, I don't care. Um, you know, you could be a Republican, um you could be a Democrat, you can, you know, be in the independent party. I, I don't care. That's, my issue is um Donald Trump doesn't condemn um white supremacists. He, he does.
It's not a priority to him.
Mine. I had an argument with someone on Facebook the other day, because he said, um he actually did condemn them. And I said, okay, show me the receipt. He showed me a video, I already saw the video, and I said, do you realize like in that video, he said, there's, um, it's to blame on both sides? He didn't, you know, say to them personally, like, no.
Well, that's exactly, at, at that Charlottesville, the Charlottesville rally in 2017, he said there's fine people on both sides. And right there, it's like, no, 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 people were carrying torches. Like, you know, like that's where it started. I mean, not where it started, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I, they always make excuses, um they always make excuses for not trying to educate themselves. They keep saying, oh, um okay symbol, it's a hoax. And I'm like, okay, if we want to speak facts, yes, it was a hoax to begin with. But they started to run with it and say, okay, yeah, let's do that to, you know, identify ourselves and um show the world who we really are without um having to, you know, put on the cape or.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the white hood, without having to put the white hood on.
So um I keep telling people that, I know, um some of the school teachers would reach out to me, um some that like I'm really close with, they would, you know, ask me if I'm doing okay, if I need anything. I'm like, no, I'm fine. But the only thing I want you to do is educate yourself on this, because what if a kid did it at school in front of the flag and stuff? What are you gonna do then? Are you gonna be quiet? You can't reprimand him if you're not gonna reprimand your uh, your president.
Exactly.
So what are you gonna do?
You gotta set the example.
I'm big on this. Let's educate ourselves now so we can prevent things like this from happening in the future.
That's the, that's the main thing we're preaching. We've been, we've been doing this for about a month and a half, probably. What'd he say, Nick, a month and a half?
Yeah, 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 about, about that, yeah.
And the main thing we're preaching is just education, get out, talk to, talk to people, talk to your friends, read a book, watch movies, listen to music, it's, it's everywhere. And people are blind to it still. And that's kind of just like, I do think like once the dust settles, and I don't know when that is, I don't know if it's years from now, I don't know if it's a year from now, but when the dust settles, I think like, there's gonna be lessons learned. And I think there's gonna be like some sort of progression from like 2020 as a whole and everything that we're seeing blown up, even though it's been going on forever. But um at the end of the day, the groundwork still has to be done and the education.
Exactly.
And these examples and of moments of like what you experienced with the president, these are examples that need to be approached at the, in the right way. And right now, I don't think, I mean, I, I like the exposure that it's getting, but the weak statements she puts out and then like the, I don't know, there's, I hope, I hope, I hope it's not the end of it. I hope it's not the end of it.
I, and um I know that we're gonna have a, another meeting soon. Um, they're gonna email me whenever they're ready. Um, and I completely agree with you. Um, I personally, and I hate saying this, but the death of George Floyd, he kind of sacrificed his life and because of his sacrifice, everything is changing right now. And I hate that, obviously, it had to take the death of a black man for things like this to happen, but it happened. And to see a whole bunch of people, even though we're still in a pandemic, to come together and fight and say Black Lives Matter, um that worms my heart. Because Black Lives Matter, it might be a movement to everybody else, but it's real life for us.
It's a lifestyle.
All day.
It's a lifestyle every day, every day.
Every day. Um, I know for a fact that um, you know, that's why it's important that all this stuff is happening right now. Because we're, we're able to have conversations like this and we're able to educate ourselves. I told someone um yesterday, um they asked me if I knew the difference between the movement and um the actual organization. And I said, well, you know what? This is the time for me and you both to educate ourselves, because I'm, you know, I was never really aware that there was two different, um, two different things. For my, I believe that one is political and then one's the actual, you know, movement. Um, so I told him, he said like, what can I do to help out? And I said, um, well, first things first, let's support our Black-owned businesses.
Yeah.
You have to be, you have to have conversations. If you, if you can't have these conversations and you feel like you have to be defensive every time, the need to. the need to reevaluate your life, you have to, you have to, like, I told Stacy, her friends, you know, they wanted to get dirt on me instead of look at the problem and say. Let's educate ourselves so we know what this is now, they wanted, they wanted to put me through the dirt, I swear. When she told me this, I said, really? And she was like, um, I even asked an African American, but they didn't know. Okay, like, so what's your point?
You're gonna rub it in your face, like, what's your point? I kinda had a.
Problem, everyone, and I said this to them too, everyone's so comfortable right now. And they don't like change, they're like, well, I'm comfortable, I'm, I wanna settle, I don't, I don't wanna change anything, I like what's going on now, and it's like you can't, you can't settle in situations like this, you absolutely can't, um, and I think that's one of Newcastle's main problems. They see something and because they don't agree with it, they're like, oh, I don't care. Well, you should care, you know, this is important, this is the lifestyle, like, you, you have to know what offends certain communities. Like, you wouldn't, even, and this is my thing, even if you did not know, and I told her this, even if you did not know what it was.
You think she didn't know? Do you think she didn't know?
Um, personally, um, at first I said, eh, she probably did, but she's, she's a Democrat, so I was like, oh, I'll, let me give her the benefit of the doubt. But then again, it's like, you're mocking somebody, how come you don't know what you're doing?
Yeah, you're, you're the adult, you should know. Even if you don't know, anytime you're in a picture, throwing up any kinda hand symbol, anything with your face, like you need to look be, just be cautious, you know what I mean? Like, no matter what it is, like, just be cautious and look it up.
If you are, um, if you have some type of power, some type of authority, everything that you do now is on a spotlight, so you have to watch what you do. And um, that's why I said, you know, she needs to be, um, she needs to resign, because if you're on that pedestal, the high one, and you're doing something that obviously violates, you know some type of policy, regardless if you don't have it, but that's still something, and I mean, you need to step down, you need to realize what you did, you need to work on it, and I'm not saying she has to be on the school board, but if you're gonna step down from, you know, president, let someone else be the president, you know.
That goes, that goes right into who the president of our country is, because he's on the highest pedestal and it doesn't apply to him. And so, it's a trickle-down effect to the rest of society, I mean, that's literally what we've seen since he's been in office. Not to be political or anything, cause I'm not really either, but it, it is, it's a true statement.
To be a political podcast, but we're sometimes.
We're not, yeah, we're not.
I'm not political, but sometimes you gotta be.
Yeah, and it's something we all should strive to at least know a, a little bit about, and that's something I'm doing better with. I can get some type of conversation, politically, I used to run away from them, I used to like not. That's all I got to say.
Exactly, eight years, we didn't care, like after that.
Well, when Obama um got in the office, my dad actually, he sent me a recording, like a voicemail, and I was eight years old and I like, I'm like, oh my god, dad, we have a black president. I laugh about that now, but like, after um, whenever I was of age and I can actually vote, I'm like okay, I'm, I'm ready, I wanna vote now, I'm ready to, you know, educate myself and get myself out there, because I was one of those people that thought, oh, my voice doesn't matter, like I, whatever I say, like it, it won't matter, it won't affect anything. But now it's, okay, our lives depend on it, we need to do.
Shit, this actually is relevant, we need to go do something about it, yeah.
Exactly.
Our last episode, we had a congresswoman come on and she was kinda preaching the same rhetoric to us.
From your district too, actually. Her name's Christie, check her out, she's running for Congress.
I did see, I believe she came to my June tenth event that um I hosted. People we hosted, it was fun. So if you guys are ever in the Newcastle area, June nineteenth of next year, please come by.
Okay, okay, the invite is out.
It might be, my sister's birthday is June twentieth, so she's the one who lives there. I might be.
Dev, I wanted to thank you again for hopping on with us, this was fun, sorry I didn't have wine, next time, we'll get you one again soon.
Thank you, I, I, I like this, it was, it was fun. I'll definitely have wine the next time, so.
We'll send a bottle or something, we'll be.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate it a lot.
For sure, good luck with school.
Yeah, yeah, good luck, stay safe too.
You guys stay safe as well.
For sure.